Special meeting of the council of the corporation and municipality of Central Elgin. It is Monday, June the 23rd. We welcome those who are in the chamber as well as those who are joining us virtually. If I could ask those in attendance to please rise to the national anthem. Thank you. The municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it is located on the land of the McKee Treaty that was signed by the Wahandat and by Anishapi nations, including ancestors of Chippewa's of the Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Hottasani, Atawandronk, and Mississauga Nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Elgin. Council, do I have any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the nature thereof? Seeing none, we have a delegation this evening. Jeff Mosher, who is an associate with LURA Consulting. Mr. Mosher, did you want to come forward to the podium? Just press the button for the red light and I welcome you.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan.
Hi, Mayor Sloan, if I could take a moment just to introduce Mr. Mosher to members of council. So tonight, we're here to talk about the engagement strategy for the planning of the former psychiatric lands as part of the official amendment process. As we've talked before, meaningful community input is vital to the process and it reflects our businesses' needs, our residents' wants, and also our vision for the property across the street. So we've brought in Lura Consulting on board to lead this engagement. They have extensive knowledge and experience in public consultation and municipal planning, and we're really excited to have them here. So just so council's aware, the public engagement will be based on the draft directions report that will be presented to council in September. So once that's approved, the engagement strategy, as Jeff will go through today, will take flight and we will start taking an extensive work, sorry, extensive work. Questions that you may be receiving about this type of participation. Obviously invite members of council to the various engagement activities and seek your inputs on various additional groups or other people that you may feel would be appropriate for us to outreach. So your support, as always, is really appreciated as we embark on our engagement process. And I'm really pleased to introduce you to Jeff Mosher from Lura Consulting and I will send the presentation over to you, Jeff.
Turned off. And we'll work with my colleague Liz McCarty, supporting the engagement strategy for the Central Elgin Hospital lands. We work for a firm called Lura, which specializes in community engagement. Lura helps communities and organizations have important conversations about their future. Guiding our work is the fundamental belief that communities need to have a say in community planning processes and decision making. We know from experience that meaningful engagement informs better planning and the results from this planning become easier to implement. And so the timeline we're providing from the vision document, the first round of engagement this fall will build on the council-approved vision and guiding principles to seek feedback on the draft planning directions. The strategy supports the next two stages of the process to amend the Central Elgin official plan to permit redevelopment of the former hospital lands. Phase one in fall 2025 will include consultation on draft planning directions, which will inform the proposed policy framework and which will be brought forward for council approval in our report in December. Phase two in winter 2026 is focused on the consultation on the draft official plan amendment, including a public statutory meeting, which will be brought forward for council approval in March, April 2026. So, as I said, we've been hired to work with Central Elgin for this important and transformational project. This process supports legal requirements under the Planning Act and good planning practice. And public engagement ensures the planning process is open and municipal decisions are accountable to the community. I'm speaking to you tonight about the strategy we developed with support and input from the Central Elgin team to explain the hospital lands project and why it matters to the community, collect feedback to understand community priorities and concerns, offer different ways for people to share their opinions that fit the community's needs, use existing communication channels to reach more people, and connect with local people and groups who can support and communicate the project. During the delivery of the engagement program, we will encourage meaningful participation and transparency. We will center equity and inclusion. We will try to build trust and collaboration. We will gather input to informed decision making and identify and connect with local individuals and organizations. The municipality of Central Elgin and the consultant team will provide accessible and flexible options for participating in the engagement process. Our approach will emphasize and seek to design an open and transparent approach, as I said, create safe spaces for feedback that will build trust through transparency, and design approaches that empower voices and choices for the participants. This includes providing a variety of engagement options, both online and in person, with multiple dates and locations, multiple ways to express ideas, and adapting activities for the needs of the audience. This approach is built on core values such as meeting people where they are, people are busy and we want to make it as easy as possible to provide feedback, accounting for consultation fatigue, a balance between sharing enough information and providing opportunities while not overwhelming the community, monitoring gaps, we need to ask who's missing, what other feedback could they provide, being clear on the objectives, and using plain and accessible language. The engagement activities in phase one will include community pop-ups and kitchen table meetings for smaller format discussions, stakeholder meetings, an online survey, an open house, and presentations to Elgin County and St. Thomas elected officials. Council members will be informed in advance of all meeting dates, times, and locations in case they wish to attend. We are looking to plan through the summer to deliver phase one of the engagement with small group talks, pop-ups, kitchen table talks, and open houses in September. We will then provide counsel with the phase one report in December and begin phase two in the new year. With phase one, we are looking to reach the broadest audiences we can, focusing on community members and organizations and businesses directly impacted by the project, the general public at large, equity-deserving groups, and the county and St. Thomas. We will connect with communities and impacted parties to let them know about this process through digital and grassroots platforms, connecting via the website on online survey. We will establish a discussion guide to provide details and answers to common questions. We will advertise through social media posters, school flyers, to promote events and the open house, and we will engage connections in the community and with other organizations to get the message out. And this brings us to your role in the process. The mayor and council play an important role in this process. First, as champions to raise awareness. Second, as connectors suggesting groups or stakeholders that could be engaged. Third, as leaders ensuring transparency and accountability of the process. And finally, participating. You will be provided with an open invitation to attend or participate in key phase one events. And so what we're looking to learn by fall's end, we will be producing a what we've heard report that will highlight high-level themes, including public and stakeholder priorities for the site, gaps in awareness and understanding, and recommendation draft directions. And this summary report will be shared with council in December 2025. And now we invite feedback from council. Is there anything missing? Do you think we're reaching the right groups? Do you think there are any opportunities to strengthen phase one in our planning process?
Thank you very much, council. Any questions or comments about the presentation? Misheard, any comments or questions? No? I think that's good. You want to, are you giving us the next steps or?
Just two last steps, yep. So now we're left to finalize the logistics and outreach plan in July and August. We'll launch phase one engagement after council approval of the draft directions in the fall. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to participate in this process and we look forward to engaging with the community.
Thanks very much. I do have a quick question about how you will engage the community with respect to communications. Obviously, there's social media, but there's some people that don't use it. Can you give us a bit of an understanding on how that will work?
Of course. And so we try to engage in a variety of different ways. Like I said, we try to engage in small and large groups, whether through the open house, pop-up events where people are often located, kitchen table talks for specific groups that may have insightful feedback to give us. And then we also promote through all the traditional mediums as well, whether that's print through papers, firing, postering, mail out postcards. Really, the toolbox is endless and we like to provide any opportunity, not just digital or big events.
Good. Well, I know you've done it before, so you've got some experience. Counselor Griffin, please.
Thanks. I guess this might be sort of a difficult question, but as far as I can tell as yet, we don't have a firm grasp on what the nature will be of who owns, who develops, et cetera, as we go through this process. When we engage with the community, that could be very overwhelming. How are we going to address that so that all of those possible options exist for them?
Thank you, sir.
Through you, your worship, to Counselor Griffin. I think the purpose of this exercise is to address our official plan amendment. So regardless of who owns it or who will be developing it, it is really about the vision of the property moving forward. So that's, we will really try to gear our engagement to what the future community will look like, regardless of who will be developing it.
Thank you. And follow up to that, my concern in that mainly is that many of the things that we talked about during visioning are things that we would have a different level of ability to implement depending on who it is that owns it and who it is that develops it. For example, some of the things that we talked about that we would like to see in homes built, that would really depend very much on who controls what elements of this. So that's where I'm wondering sort of about how much engagement with the community and what diversity of options when we don't even know for sure what options we're really going to have thorough control over.
Through the, through the mayor to Counselor Griffin again, because this is a high-level visioning for the directions, I think, and again, referring back to regardless of who owns it, the municipality is still the regulator. And so there are still certain things that we do have authority over, whether it's certain build types or with the changing legislation that may be more guidance opposed to regulatory. So I think this is really about envisioning what the, what the community will look like and if we had all our buckets full and we could, these were all their wishes, whether or not we could regulate them at the time, it'll depend on who our community partner is moving forward.
Thank you so much.
Good question. Thank you. Thank you, sir. I think we're exhausted our questions for now, but we look forward to working with you throughout the summer and into the fall.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
You're welcome. No correspondence. Chief Administrative Officer CAO 0925, short-term rentals licensing program resourcing and bylaw. Could I get a mover in a second or please? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Connors, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that the resourcing costs associated with the short-term rental accommodations licensing program as outlined in Report CAO 925 be approved, that $75,000 in expenses related to staffing, legal, and initial software costs be funded through the working capital reserve and reimbursed through the collection of fees to be reconciled at the end of 2025, that bylaw number 2713 rates and fees bylaw be amended to include fees related to the short-term rentals licensing program as outlined in Staff Report CAO 925, that the SEP fines outlined in Schedule A of Draft Bylaw 202537 be submitted for approval by the Ministry of the Attorney General, and the bylaw 202537, the short-term rental accommodations licensing bylaw be approved.
Thank you. We've got Ms. Lombardi, Ms. Leach, Mr. Gomperez here. Questions or comments from the council, please? Counselor Graham.
I guess I have questions for the CAO at this point, on the tails of the Lura presentation that talks about public engagement. CAO, can you confirm that you're responsible for overseeing basically the operations of Ministry of MCE?
Through your worship, I believe I am.
I'm going to assume, but just to be clear, do you believe public engagement is an important part of municipal decision-making?
Is there a question here other than for the CAO about public engagement? We had, we had two open houses, as I recall. We were at both of them. So let's get to the question, please.
These are the questions that I have for the CAO.
Okay. We're not talking about the role of the CAO. We're talking about short-term rentals. So if I could have a question about short-term rentals, that would be perfect.
This is a question about short-term.
Okay, thank you, counselor.
If you could, if the CAO could answer that question about public engagement?
I'm sorry, I don't remember the question. Yes?
So when, under your oversight, when staff proposes the short-term rental bylaw that contradicts the majority of resident input related to total caps and caps on the number of streets, do you believe that that aligns with principles of public engagement and public trust?
Your worship, I'm not comfortable answering these questions.
That's fine, and I don't think you should have to. Are there any other questions for either Ms. Lombardi, Mr. Gomperez, or Ms. Leach about actual short-term rentals? Ms. Lombardi, please.
Sorry, this may assist in responding to a couple of those questions. The public engagement process was run, and in terms of the, I believe, and I'm going to look at Ms. Leach, I believe the 70 responses through the formal process, under 1% of them actually referenced a cap, and I believe you were given a package of those public comments.
Counselor Graham.
Through the mayor to Paula, to Ms. Lombardi, actually, on the, on the document that we were provided by the deputy clerk, the majority of respondents wanted caps and the majority of respondents wanted caps on on-street percentages. That was the document that we were provided by staff.
Ms. Leach, did you want to comment, please?
Your worship, at this time, if council is agreeable, I'd like to provide just a bit of an overview of the report and the draft bylaw that's before council this evening, just to kind of give some context to the proposed bylaw, if that's okay. Thank you, your worship, through you to council. I'd like to first highlight that there are three major components to the report before you this evening, the first being an outline of the recommended resourcing for the short-term rental licensing program, the second being an overview of the contents of the proposed bylaw, and third being a summary of the feedback received from the public during the two-week comment period on the draft bylaw. So to quickly run through the details of the proposed bylaw, the draft bylaw is based on the key principles and program framework that was approved by council on May 12th of this year. These key principles represent the culmination of significant research, best practice in public policy development, and technical contributions from legal, planning, building, fire, bylaw, and administrative expertise. In addition to the provisions related to the general program framework, this draft bylaw outlines in detail the process and requirements for obtaining and renewing licenses and the application review and issuance of license process. It lists the prohibitions associated with the short-term rental licensing program, outlines an appeal process and procedure with the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services to serve as the Appeal Officer for the program. It details enforcement authority and procedure and has an effective date of January 1st, 2026. Staff proposed that the materials required to be provided to short-term rental operators to their guests include a rental guest code of conduct, which is Appendix B to the report. It clearly outlines guests' obligations in accordance with our municipal bylaws, reminding them that the premises are, for the most part, located in residential neighborhoods and that the residents of those neighborhoods have the right to enjoy their properties without being disrupted by nuisance from others. Those rights will be held, upheld through use of the responsible person and 24/7 monitoring service, as well as municipal bylaw enforcement when required. The report also includes an Appendix A that outlines what the application process will look like for our prospective licensees and what they'll be required to submit along with their application form and fees. In terms of next steps, starting September 1st, the short-term rental licensing program will be finalized with resources, personnel, and technology in place for the period in which operators are required to become licensed, which begins on October 1st and lasts until December 31st. Again, all short-term rentals in the municipality would require a license as of January 1st, 2026.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Leach. Did you want to comment, Mr. Gomperez? You spent a lot of work on this one as well. I'm just happy to open it up if you wish to, sir.
I think Ms. Leach covered most of it, so I'm happy with that.
Perfect. Ms. Lombardi, you're good for now? Good. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the staff report? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for being here, Ms. Lombardi. Thanks, Mr. Gomperez, and thank you, Ms. Leach, for your work. CAO 1025, could I get a mover in a second or please? This is a Central Elgin meeting schedule amendment. Counselor Watson, Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Watson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the 2025 municipality of Central Elgin council schedule be amended to remove the regular meeting scheduled for July 21st, 2025, with the opportunity to schedule a special meeting as needed per the procedural bylaw.
Questions or comments on this one? Did you have a counselor? Yep. Griffin, counselor.
Just a small detail. It looked to me like we got the 2024 schedule on there, not the 2025 schedule. Can we plan on receiving at least by email an updated one?
I didn't notice that. Apologies. If we do, we can send it through. Thanks, Counselor Griffin. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. CAO 1125, the Plains Baptist Church Cemetery Grass Cutting. A mover in a second or please? Counselor Griffin, Deputy Mayor.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the Plains Baptist Church Cemetery be added to the municipality's grass-cutting service contract with clean-cut lawn care effective immediately.
Questions or comments? I see this is from my friend, Mr. Dale. Go ahead, Counselor Griffin. See, it's in here? Okay.
I just quickly wanted to say that my concern last meeting had been about the transparency and making sure it wasn't a line where the public could see it, and I really appreciate that you guys got that cleaned up. It happened very quickly.
Thank you, Counselor Griffin, and thank you, Mr. Jensen. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. CAO 1225, reestablishment of a life jacket loner program at the Port Stanley Main Beach. A mover in a second or please? Counselor Connors and the Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Counselor Connors, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the reestablishment of a life jacket loner program be approved at Port Stanley Main Beach, that the municipality, with support from the Elgin County Drowning Prevention Coalition, apply for the life jacket contribution program offered through the Life Saving Society, and that staff be directed to develop a detailed implementation plan, including partnerships, operational protocols, and resource requirements.
Thanks very much. I'm told we did this before in the old days. Any questions or comments on this plan? Counselor Graham.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to staff, do we know when the previous program was canceled and why it was canceled?
Ms. Heard, please.
Through your worship to Counselor Graham, I'm not sure of the exact year, but I understand that it was in relation to risk management. So we have confirmed with our insurers and they have assured us that as long as we take the certain provisions as outlined in the reports, it should be fine.
Thank you. Follow up, Counselor Graham?
And did we confirm with legal as well?
Through, through your worship to, I'm looking at Mr. Jan Soon, he referred to our intact insurers. I'm assuming that went through their legal.
Mr. Jensen?
Through you, Mayor. Yes, so intact, that went through their legal division.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Looks like a good program. All those in favor of the staff report? Opposed? And that's carried. CAO 1325 is the planning fees review. A mover in a second or please? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Bachman, thank you both.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that the development fees contained in Central Elgin's fees bylaw be amended as outlined in Schedule B of Staff Report CAO 1325, effective September 1st, 2025, with the exception of fees for minor variance applications, which shall be implemented upon the adoption of the new comprehensive zoning bylaw for the municipality, and that staff be directed to establish a schedule for the periodic review and annual update of the tariff of fees to ensure ongoing alignment with actual processing costs, staffing levels, and service delivery improvements.
Thank you. I'm going to first go to Mr. Hicks, our friend from Montreal, who's joining us virtually. Always a pleasure to see you, sir. Did you want to give us a couple of comments on this and the report?
Very happy to, and very happy to be here, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for the opportunity to provide a summary of the report. I'll try to move as efficiently as possible. So we are pleased to present the planning fee review we completed for the municipality of Central Elgin. The report that's before council this evening is the product of a comprehensive study aimed at evaluating municipality's current planning application fees to ensure that they're equitable, transparent, and sufficient to cover the actual cost of service delivery in the municipality. As a little bit of a background, as many of you may know, under Section 69 of the Ontario Planning Act, municipalities are empowered to charge fees for the processing of planning applications in order to recover the anticipated costs of providing such services. The municipality's existing The municipality's existing fee structure was last fully reviewed in, back in 2017, and since then, we've seen the municipality much increased development activity, greater administrative complexity in the processing of planning applications, and inflationary pressures which have widened the gap between the actual cost and the fees collected by the municipality. So the purpose of this review was twofold. First, to assess whether Central Elgin's fees reflect the true cost of service delivery, and second, to explore opportunities for realignment with principles of cost recovery, administrative efficiency, and fairness to both municipality and as well to applicants. With respect to how we approached this review, this is a two-pronged approach or two-pronged methodology that we used. The first was we undertook a comparative fee analysis, so we benchmarked Central Elgin's planning fees against six comparable municipalities in southwestern Ontario, Tem Center, Ingersoll, Pilsenburgh, Woodstock, Stratfordshire, Carradoc, and the City of St. Thomas. This helped to evaluate our competitiveness and identify best practices as in relation to the administration of these fees. The second part of the analysis that we undertook was a cost recovery analysis. So we standardized estimates of staff time and fully burdened hourly rates to assess the cost of processing the different types of planning applications, so planning applications for minor variance, zoning bylaw amendment, plan of subdivision, consent applications, et cetera. The time estimates covered all stages of the application process, so beginning from the pre-consultation and the submission review to the technical circulation of the application, statutory public meetings, and then the post-decision administration, getting notices of decision out, conditions of approval, et cetera. In terms of some of the key analysis and key findings of the report, when we undertook the comparative analysis, this revealed that Central Elgin's planning fees were significantly lower than the peer municipalities that we reviewed, on average, about 60% lower than the municipalities that were, those same five municipalities that I'd mentioned previously. When we exclude the City of St. Thomas's fees to that, City of St. Thomas had very similar fees in terms of the amounts and the structure of that fee schedule, the disparity increased to about 65%. As an example, a fee for a minor variance is $553 compared to the average of $1,200 to $1,575 that's charged for the processing in comparable-sized municipalities. For more complex applications, like plans of subdivision and official plan amendments, we found that there was an even greater disparity between, between the application fees charged by the municipality and those of the other peer municipalities. When we looked at the cost recovery analysis, so again, this is us looking at the average amounts of time and money that are spent on the processing of applications, we found similar results. None of the municipality's current fee structures were able to, to cover the actual cost of the processing of applications. So to give you a couple of examples, the cost to process a plan of subdivision application in the municipality of Central Elgin is estimated by our accounts to be about $7,440, but the application fee that's being charged is only $2,215. When we see official plan amendments, the cost that we estimate to process that, based on the analysis that we undertook, is about $3,100, but the municipality is only charging at this time $830 for the, for the processing of that application. And this under-recovery of fees places an additional burden on the tax base to cover the costs, and it also limits the municipality's ability to effectively resource the, the planning department. So in conclusion, kind of with respect to the recommendations coming out of the report, and this is reflected in the resolution that's before counsel this evening and the direction, based on the analysis, the report does identify revised fee schedule, which counsel can find on page 11 of the report. The fee schedule emphasizes full-cost recovery, so this is an attempt to move the municipality in the direction of full-cost recovery to make sure that the actual costs of processing are covered. Fairness and equity, making sure that application fees were proportionately based on application complexity, and also administrative efficiency. So we were also trying to avoid kind of overly complicated and complex fee structures to maintain clarity and transparency with applicants. Typically, when we see more complex, pardon me, complex, larger municipalities, they tend to have much more complex fee structures. So it's in our professional planning opinion that the proposed fee structure that's before counsel this evening better reflects the actual cost for the processing of, of, of applications, and again, moves the municipality closer towards a full-cost recovery application tariff. We also note in that application, the tariff of fees that's in, in this report, that county level of fees are also available, so they're there for the transparency and coordination. There's a selection of applications that the County of Elgin also charges fees for, typically ones that they're involved in processing, particularly when they're approval authority, and that those, it should be noted that those fees would apply in addition to those Central Elgin fees that are noted. Again, also, this was reflected in the resolution tonight, but in terms of an implementation strategy, we are recommending that the new fee structure would be introduced as September 1st of this year, that would allow for approximately two-month transition time period for the new tariff to come into effect, for us to notify members of the development community and also the general public of these forthcoming changes. And as was also noted in the resolution, we are recommending at this time that the application fees for minor variance be maintained at their current level until such time as the new comprehensive zoning bylaw is, is adopted. And this is in recognition that minor variances are often requested or need to be requested as a result of older or dated zoning bylaw provisions. So in the interest of wanting to ensure that we're treating applicants fairly and equitably across the municipality, it's our recommendation to, to counsel tonight that those fees just be paused until such time as we have a new zoning bylaw in place, pardon me. And finally, the last recommendation, which was also noted in the resolution, is a recommendation regarding the regular annual review of these fees to ensure that they remain current and reflect the, the staffing and service levels that are available to the municipality. So with that, in conclusion, we, we believe that this fee review represents an important and necessary step for the municipality in building a fiscally sustainable and responsive planning department at the municipality of Central Elgin. And with that, I'll turn the mic back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm happy to field any questions that counsel may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Counselor Griffin is first. Thank you.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank you for the report. I did read it with interest, and I think it's wonderful if we can get to a place where we are charging appropriate rates. I would agree from everything that I saw that we are behind. I did have concern about the comparative analysis. My concern was that, for example, I did see that Woodstock was suggested as comparable to CE, and there are more logical comparables that were omitted. So for example, in 2023, Malahide and Bayham did a fee review, and I was able to find Bayham's analysis on their website. Now, Bayham is half of our size, so we're looking at a two-to-one ratio, whereas Woodstock is three times our size. So the, the population is more comparable, they are part of the same upper tier. There are many things that would make them perhaps more similar, their geography as well, they're much closer to us. So there were places that I thought might be more relevant, and when I looked at their numbers, I saw that it made it look as if Woodstock artificially inflated the discrepancy in our numbers. So for example, when we look at plan of subdivision, Central Elgin's charging about $2,200, and Woodstock is about $8,400, and that looks really dramatic, but Bayham only ended up at $2,600, a little bit more than us, but not dramatically so. And then even in ones where there was a really notable difference, like official plan amendment was one that I saw, Central Elgin's charging $800 to Woodstock's $4,500. And again, we've got a very wide gap there. Bayham's charging $2,500. So they're about half as much as Woodstock, and I would still agree that overall, that tells me that we are charging less than those around us, but it makes it seem far less dramatic than the 60 to 65% that this report showed. When you consider those possibilities, is there anything that you could speak to about the potential artificial inflation, and whether you have any concerns about how you chose those communities to compare us to, or whether there's any accuracy that could be reflected better?
Mr. Hicks, please.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of points to, to address there. The first, with respect to the way that the municipalities were chosen, and where they compared or the peer municipalities that we looked at, we looked at these municipalities for a number of different reasons. Population was one of those reasons that we chose the municipalities that we did. In other cases, it was wanting to make sure that we were choosing municipalities that were in the region, that were also located within two-tier systems, and that also had similar growth rates and development rates. So when we were looking, and we chose to look at the City of St. Thomas, for instance, as a, as a comparator municipality, we were looking at them particularly in line with the growth rate as, more so as opposed to its, its, its population base. One of the other criteria that we also looked at, and one of the reasons that we chose Tem Center and Stratfordshire Carradoc, for instance, would be that mix of urban and rural components. So a little bit trying to, again, reflect the makeup and the various components of the, of the, I guess, of the character, of the planning character or makeup of, of the municipality of Central Elgin. And so when it came time to, with respect to our confidence behind how we arrived at the numbers, certainly, I can't really, obviously can't speak to how the City of Woodstock or any of the other municipalities that we studied arrived at their own numbers. We were certainly relying on, on, on our own estimates. Those were, those were developed in discussions with staff, and our own experiences of firm processing these applications independently. One of the things I would note about perhaps why Bayham, we would see a, a, a lower tariff of fees being brought in as opposed to what we're proposing in Central Elgin, is the, the resources and the capacity that Bayham has to, you know, let's say, review a stormwater management plan in-house, or a site plan in-house. I, I don't know this for a fact, but I, I would have to guess that there's a high likelihood that the municipality of Bayham is not doing that in-house the same way that Central Elgin is, and that they're likely farming that out. I don't, pardon me, I don't mean in a bad way, but they're sending that out externally for a peer review, just because they don't contain the same staff, staffing levels. There could be a number of reasons why Bayham's, you know, again, planning fees might be lower. I'd be, I'd be taking a few hypotheses, but I guess to go to the crux of your question or the core of your question is, are we comfortable and are we confident in the analysis that we undertook, specifically as it relates to kind of the, the resourcing and the number of hours that we, that we estimate are, are, are involved in the processing of applications, and also our choice of, of comparator or peer municipalities, I would put forward that we're, we were quite comfortable in, 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 in our numbers and our analysis.
Thank you.
That was wonderful. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Watson, please.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. This is a question, anyone, and it's real simple. One of the things was an annual review, and we haven't had one done here since 2017. So what took so long for us to do this? Can anybody answer that?
Counselor, Counselor Hurd. Ms. Hurd, please.
Thank you. Through your worship to Counselor Watson, I believe I, we have mentioned it a few times in our conversations in regarding developing our planning, our planning regime here in Central Elgin, and the importance of ensuring that our fees are helping to offset the costs as it relates to processing those fees, so they're not borne by the, by the ratepayer. I can't speak to the previous administration, why they haven't been, they were not reviewed. However, I was really pleased that, that we got this work done and feel it's a step moving forward.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, please.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, Paul, for the report. It, it was super easy to comprehend, and I, I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hicks? Seeing none. If I, I've got a mover in a second, or could I get a, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of counsel, have a great evening. Cheers.
Over to the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, ICS 4325, request for tenders, Caesar's Road sidewalk. Mover in a second, or please? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that the tender from Chad Hartman Construction for 2025-14 Caesar Road Sidewalk in the amount of $106,953 plus HST be accepted.
All those in favor? Oh, we need a discussion first. If anyone want to discuss this, relatively straightforward, sorry to jump the gun. Seeing none. Now, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. ICS 4425, request for tenders, hot-mix paving program. A mover in a second, or please? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Watson, thank you both.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that the tender from D Rock Paving for 2025-13 Hot-Mix Paving Program in the amount of $146,354.79 plus HST be accepted.
Questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. ICS 4525, Pearl Drain Petition, a mover in a second, or please? Counselor Griffin, Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Counselor Watson, that the drainage works proceed as described in the attached position, petition from Ed Pearl, and that Brandon Widner, P. Enge of Spree Associates Limited be appointed to prepare a report under Section 4 of the Drainage Act for a new municipal drain.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. ICS 4725 is the Westport Stanley Stormwater Infrastructure Improvements Engineering Program. Mover in a second, or please? Deputy Mayor. Counselor Griffin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Griffin, that the proposal submitted by RJ Burnside and Associates Limited for the Westport Stanley Infrastructure Improvements Engineering Design be accepted for the total cost of $485,762.52 excluding HST.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. ICS 4925 is a letter of support from the Port Burwell Secondary Water Board Health and Safety Water Stream Application. Mover in a second, or please? Counselor Griffin. Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Griffin, seconded by Counselor Watson, that the mayor, on behalf of the municipality, sign a letter of support for the Township of Malahide and Municipality of Bayham joint funding application on behalf of the Port Burwell Secondary Board to the Health and Safety Water Stream.
Any questions or comments? Good, because I already signed it. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. But just before the meeting, so it wasn't anything, yeah. ICS 0525 is a harbor condition assessment and capital expenditure study. Mover in a second, or please? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Connors, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that the proposal submitted by Shore Plan Engineering Limited for the Harbor Condition Assessment and Capital Expenditure Study be accepted for the total cost of $284,400 excluding HST.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Okay. Director of Fire Services, FS 0325, our rescue truck 43 replacement. Mover in a second, or Counselor Bachman. Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, that the purchase of the Belmont Rescue Truck 43 from supplier Metal Fab Fire Trucks in the amount of $882,1953 plus taxes be approved, and that the non-budgeted portion of $82,1953 plus non-creditable taxes be funded from the fire vehicle and equipment reserve.
Mr. Decort, do you want to say a word on this one?
Sure. Just wanted to tell you that, you know, this truck is an important part of our fleet, and that needs to be replaced, and the one that we're basically using right now is in dire need of it, and time is of the essence, and, and Metal Fab has come to the table, and they jumped a lot of hoops and said, yeah, we can do this, we can build this truck that fits in a smaller hull and stuff like that. That's one of the specifics that they, they jumped on and said, yeah, we can do all that stuff. And they came in at a good price, and they are Canadian, you know, so it's all pluses. So I just wanted to say that. But the timeframe is that if we move on it now, we can get it sometime in mid-'26.
Great. Yeah, I'm, I'm quite knowledgeable about Metal Fab. I hear they're from the East Coast. Anyway, thanks for giving me that information before the meeting, Marie. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Graham.
Through the mayor to chief. So it mentions in the report that staff was directed to consult with canoe and multi-vehicle, but doesn't say if there was any follow-up on that or what the results of that were. Do you know that information?
Mr. Decort?
Okay. Okay. Thank you, chief.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the new fire truck? Opposed? And that carries. Bylaws. Bylaw 2025-037 for the short-term rental accommodation licensing bylaw. Can I get a mover in a second, or Deputy Mayor and Counselor Connors, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that bylaw 2025-37 be read a first time and passed.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Notices of motion. Counselor Connors, I believe this is from you. Did you wish to speak to it, sir?
Yes.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor. This comes from the Town Hall that was conducted on June 5th. Over the last couple of years, I've had many complaints about parking and speeding on McBain Avenue and now on Freeman. So this, this motion allows staff to go back and explore the best traffic calming measures, whether it's stop signs, whether it's speed bumps, whether it's only having parking on one side of the road, but they would come back with a full report and let us know their recommendations.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for the counselor or staff? I need a seconder. Sorry, you're right. Deputy Mayor is on that one. Thank you, deputy.
Mayor Sloan, the notice of motion moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Deputy Mayor Noble, now therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to investigate potential traffic calming options, parking restrictions, and increased parking enforcement in the McBain subdivision, and report back to council for consideration.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Bylaw to confirm the proceedings. Mover and a seconder, please. Deputy Mayor, Counselor Connors, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, the bylaw 2025-38 be read a first time and passed.
Questions?[1748.07]